Welcome everyone to the Scott WMO Watershed Planning Commission for May 20th, 2024. The first action is to call to order. Do we need a motion for that? Or can I just do that?
You can just call it to order.
All right, call it the order. Then the first action item that we need to approve is we publish the agenda and the meeting minutes which everybody has received. If everybody's had a chance to review it, I'd be open to any corrections if there are any. And hearing none, I would be open to a motion to approve the agenda and the meeting minutes as published.
This is Commissioner Casillas. I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda and meeting minutes as published.
Is there a second to that motion?
Commissioner Phillips, second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Absolutely. Commissioner Pence?
Aye.
Commissioner Casillas?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners.
All right. Looks like the first item on the agenda is Vanessa giving us an administrative update for the SWOMO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, or Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm just gonna really quick, right now, a lot of the work Ryan and Melissa will cover in their updates. I do just want to add a couple of things that we are still working on, looking for financing for the groundwater plan. Again, as I've mentioned before, lots of financing for implementation of groundwater plans. There is zero funding for groundwater planning. So I'm still kind of working hard on that, as well as there's a lot of work right now in floodplain administration. A lot of developments throughout the county, a lot of proposed developments, a lot of interest. So the work in that people are hoping to do or wanting to do that impacts the floodplain has been notably high this year. And that's certainly taken on a much larger percentage of the work that we do. So those are kind of just a couple of big comments and then I will let Melissa and Ryan speak to some of our other activities because there are many right now.
Good. Thank you, Vanessa. Any members have questions for Vanessa? Hearing none, then we can go on to our ongoing business and that would be the report from SWCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Troy. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. So I'll just summarize some of the information in the report that you see in your packet for May 21st, 2024. You'll see that the first graph there shows the number of service requests. These are landowners and in the Scott WMO that have called the Sewing Water Office and we're helping them with conservation interests or concerns. You can see the number of clients that we're working with has been on steady decline and continues to grow. So we're past the 150 mark, have been for a couple of weeks or months now. So we're pretty much overall, when we look at countywide, our numbers are like at 225 total. So that's kind of the ideal peak, if you will. When we start to get above that number, we start to sort of burst at the seams and trying to keep a track of where everybody is at and keeping up with folks and getting back to them and time becomes a little bit stressful. So it's good to see the numbers up, but it also represents a, you know, kind of a more of a little stress point for us. But it's good to see there's a lot of interest in some of the new cost share options we have available. The cost share funds, just a quick summary of where we're at. So in terms of number of active grant awards, we have a little over 1.216 million. We've encumbered over half of that now and we're sitting at about $576,000, $577,000 in available funds. They are a little bit more difficult to encumber than in past years because a lot of these grants are in specific areas and specific projects, which is what Bowser has kind of demanded. Our EPA grant that the WMO has with the MPCA specifies certain projects in certain areas. So it's not just using that money anywhere. So we gotta be a little bit choosy about it. So it becomes a little more difficult to push, but we kind of know what has to be done and where the funds need to go and what type of practices. So it's just a matter of working in that direction. The following three graphs just show graphically that same information, how much is available from each agency and the percent that's overall encumbered. Soil health and cover crops. We continue to make this a priority effort. The Sewing Water was awarded a $375,000 grant to help focus more heavily on soil health throughout Scott County, especially in WMO as well. But the nice part about that is, is that we can really dedicate the equivalent of a full-time staff person. It won't be just one person, but multiple. We're taking a team approach to really hit cover crops, soil health and other practices hard over the next three or so years. The graph there I've included for the past several months now, this just shows you kind of the the number of soil health practice acres that have been installed under the tax program. There's probably a lot more out there that we aren't tracking. Those would be landowners who are just doing it on their own, which there are plenty of. We just don't have a way to verify that information. So this just shows kind of the participation in our programs. It includes things like high residue management. You'll hear that in terms of no-till or mulch till type or strip till. Then nutrient management and cover crops as well. So we can move on, Ryan. Ecom rental, so we've exceeded the 500 acre mark and that was as of like last week. So it was really before the big rush. So we expect those numbers to climb significantly over the next month as planting season is in full gear. We did have that window in March where the weather was really nice and we, a lot of the equipment went out at that period of time. So that helped boost the numbers early in the season, earlier than we normally see anyway. Clean water education program. So we had several workshops. We had a burn, prescribed burn workshop at Ridges of Sand Creek. That was on April 2nd. And we hosted the How to Build a Rain Garden in Shakopee on April 16th. And now we're beginning to prepare for the next workshop was How to Stabilize Your Shoreline and that's scheduled for July 18th at the Spring Lake Town Hall. We continue to submit articles to the scene. Topics for this next edition will be urban agriculture, upcoming shoreline workshop, debuting the Sewing Water's new community restoration shed and a recap of our tree sale. We are working with the city. City of Prior Lake and Savage indicated that they have a number of events, community events they have throughout the summer that might be good to table those and spread our messaging for a clean water education program. It's a great way to hit a lot of people. And so we look forward to that. One, I think in the Shakopee, it's called Rhythm on the Rails. And I'm not sure the one in Savage is called, but it's a multi-week event in the city. Let's see, move down to water quality. I'll just say Sand Creek, we're in full swing on the sampling there. You can see a lot of data collection occurred that passed this past month. So it's in full swing. City of Prior Lake, we're still working. We have our final year of monitoring in Markley Lake. So we installed the conductivity temperature sensors out there and we'll begin. I think they probably already have started the actual measurements. No groundwater observation well readings this past month. We do them quarterly. So it was a month off. But you'll see in the precipitation, the month of April, we're well above average. At least at the Jordan Field Office, when you compare to historic averages and what we just read this past month. So it's good to see. I don't know if we can say we're officially out of the drought, but it sure feels like it. Let's see, move down. I think I'll skip some of that, Ryan. But for law, I'll just mention we had a couple of sites where we had to follow up. One was we did follow up and were able to confirm alternative practice at one of the property in Cedar Lake Township. What that turned out being was, so one of the ways that you can reduce the buffer width is if there's something called negative drainage. In other words, water really doesn't flow into the stream or lake due to a slight rise in the ground elevation. Often it's due to spoil piles that have been placed there from historic dredging. So in those cases, the buffer actually isn't required to be the full normal width of 30 foot minimum, 50 foot average. So we were able to confirm that that was indeed the case for one of those and now we're still following up on seeding in Bell Plain to get them into compliance. But I just would report on the buffer law in general is that we don't, we haven't really seen any pushback. So farmers are, have always been willing to work with us and learn kind of what they need to do and go about it. So we're happy about that. Finally, I'll report on the native tree sale and plant sale. So the final numbers are in. We sold about 29,000 trees and filled about 440 orders. So that's slightly down. I think last year we had about 35,000 trees. So it was fewer trees, which we're sort of expecting because the price of these bare root stock have just gone up over the past few years and last year was no exception. So we had to raise our prices and of course, because of that, we kind of were expecting to sell fewer trees and that did occur. But it was still a pretty good year, I would say, and 440 is quite a good number of orders. Right now, and for the month, the entire month of May, we're selling, we're selling the native plant and seed mixes. So that sale is currently open. And so that includes live plants, like trays and sets of plants, whole mixes and all our seed mixes that we used to sell with the tree program, but now we keep them separate. It's just a lot easier and the timing works out better. So that's in full swing and should be closing probably the end of next week or maybe into this, you know, middle of next week. I think May 30th is the last day for that sale. And Ryan, I'll just finish up by just speaking to the tables here. So we had a number of new applications, a total of $54,096 in new applications that were approved. So what you'll see there are three different types of approvals that we're representing here. One is a recommendation and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but that one is on the agenda. So our board reviewed that, but it's a decision made to be made by the WPC on the filter strip renewal. The ones you see certification, those are ones where the new docket authorizes staff approval, but they still have to go to our board for final certification. And then the ones that say approval, those were not eligible for staff approval. Largely because like that particular project was exceeding $20,000. So staff is not authorized to prove anything above 20,000. Obviously, this is over $25,000. So that went to the board and the board did approve that particular project. I believe there's, the ones that have an asterisk on them do have fact sheets if you're more interested more in some of the project information. And we had about five, four or five payments totaling a little over $31,600. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Troy. Very nice job. Any members have questions or clarification from Troy? Any follow-up? Hearing none. Thank you again, Troy. The agenda sounds like it might be Ryan.
Mr. Chair, Pence, Commissioners, good evening. So I don't have a lot of updates and they're a bit redundant from last month. So our CIPs, where things are at. So obviously the Xanadu Streambank project that we had just completed construction on that it's done. We're basically just waiting for the sub contractor to come out and do the tree and shrub plantings. I did talk to a member of the Byte last week about it. So it's on their radar. They're working with the subs. So I would imagine probably in the next month, I would, I would think that we'd see them out there doing the plantings. We still have Interflue on retainer here for coming out to kind of help us with the plantings and make sure it's all done according to the plans. We did have a little bit of extra funds in their contract that we're looking to actually, our fish survey activities. We were actually looking to have them do a preliminary feasibility study on a potential fish ladder. So basically looking at the logistics of, you know, would it fit? Where would it go? Different options, a little bit more high level because it's not a lot of money that we have left over, but it was enough to be able to do this kind of preliminary report and give us that information. So we'll continue to work with them until that's complete as well. We did complete some maintenance plantings on one of the CIPs as well. So that went, that went well and timed it kind of with the rains. And so I'm hoping that we have pretty good luck with all those bare root stocks. So we ordered those from the tree sale that Troy was just talking about. Pika Creek Design, still sitting at 90%, or we're waiting for the 90% plans to come in. Once we get those, we'll send them off to the landowners, get comments from them on it as well. Still waiting for Army Corps on the permit, but other than that, everything else is pretty well on schedule with that project. And so we'll be looking at finishing the design, working with the landowners on easements and getting it ready for a fall bid. Similar to, you know, most of the projects that we've done are kind of on a similar timeline where where we bid them in the fall and then get them ready for winter construction whenever the contractor can fit it into their schedules. At the last meeting, we talked about two extensions with two grants that we've got, the EPA grant and a watershed-based implementation funding grant through Bowser. So both of those are still in the works. The Bowser one, we just basically are at the point of just needing to sign the actual amendment. The EPA one, they're reviewing the information that I sent them. So we'll see what they say. And then if everything looked good, we would continue down that process of extending the grant. But both are looking positive in terms of extending them both one more year to be able to spend those funds. With the WBIF grant, excuse me, we had work plan revisions as well that we were adding some practices to it. So kind of a nuanced thing, but the program that they use, we needed to actually assign a dollar amount to the residue management, the nutrient management projects. Good news is we've actually already encumbered basically all of the funds that we had set aside for those practices. So, you know, in a short timeframe, we were able to encumber it all. Bad news is because we did that and we still have more projects that are coming down the pipeline, we need to do another work plan revision. So it's very simple. It's basically just changing the dollar amount. So we have it set at 20,000 and we'll start looking at what we realistically think we can spend on it. And really what it is, is we've got a pot of funds for all these different practices. Because residue and nutrient management didn't fit within a category that E-Link had. We had to separate them out. Otherwise, you could have just lumped them all together and they wouldn't have to have a separate budget for them. But that's just the way it's structured in E-Link. So we'll figure out a number, you know, it might be another 15, 20,000-ish if we think realistically we can move that before December of 2025. So we'll continue to work on that, but we've got the process down. We just completed it and we'll kind of go through that process again. So that was all I had. So if any Commissioners have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions or clarification follow-up for Ryan? If not, thank you again, Ryan. Next on the agenda will be program updates from Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few things to talk about. So the curly leaf delineation and curly leaf treatments, I think I mentioned last month that Cedar was treated very early, April 4th. A whole lake treatment with fluoridone again. I just completed with the DNR, the follow-up survey to check that treatment, the effectiveness of it on May 16th last week. Everything was looking really good. There is a lot of curly leaf in the lake, but it's definitely been affected by the treatment. And we know that because the whole plant turns kind of translucent. So we'll do another standard full lake summer survey in mid-July. I did surveys on McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole the week of May 7th through the 9th. Those were treated the week after, with the exception of Thole. So we made an attempt to get to that Northern Bay to check that. The lake level was so low, we couldn't get through the first channel. So there's two channels I got to get through on Thole to get to Thel's Northern Bays and I couldn't even get through the first one. The water level was maybe six inches. So we had to kind of stop that and get out of the lake. So unfortunately, Thole will not be treated this year and I won't be able to get like a full lake survey unless the water levels come up. So we did go with a different chemical on McMahon and O'Dowd this year. And the reason for that is, you know, with the mon winter, we had a lot of natives already coming up in both lakes. The DNR was really concerned about affecting those natives. So the chemical that we went with is called Flumigard. But it acts a lot like Daiquat, which we've been using on both lakes, but it was a little bit more expensive. But I made sure I did all the pricing calculations against our budget and we had, we were fine. I told them to go ahead and use it. Also, the good thing is that this year we got a grant to control AIS on O'Dowd of $5,250. So that's helping towards that cost too. So we're still under budget from what we budgeted for the treatments. The DNR also, because they're concerned, you know, with all the natives that were found in O'Dowd, the DNR actually went out on O'Dowd and surveyed about 20 points of an area on the lake that's not being treated and ID'd and documented the natives that they found. And are going to compare that to the after treatment survey to see how the natives might be affected at all from Flumigard. So that'll be interesting. It's kind of an experiment this year. The U of M survey, we finally got to a point where the U of M is comfortable with our changes and we worked through their comments. So I'm expecting to get that contract fully executed hopefully yet this week. And then we should, we're still on time on our timeline to start the sending out the survey in June. So we had applied, I think I told last, last meeting for that storage grant from Board of Water and Soil Resources. We will find out this Wednesday whether we got that or not. So this Wednesday is when they make that announcement. We're continuing to work with Studio Lola on some branding projects. So we're having her create a flyer template that we can use for the public engagement announcements for the plan update. So I received that first draft today and I really like it. So we're also going to have her work on creating like a two-page annual report summary that we can have as a handout at the July 22nd official kickoff meeting for the plan update. So more to come on that. Watercraft inspections, they should be starting this weekend. I've been working with waterfront, getting authorizations sent to the DNR for our inspectors that they're hiring. The DNR has to authorize them and then we also have to have the DNR authorize the devices and send out the software. And so there's been a lot of those emails going around. So hopefully we'll have inspectors this weekend on the lakes. Plan update. There's been a few things going on. I've been populating or starting to populate the webpage that we have for the plan update information. So there's a few things on there right now, but there's still more to come. Natural Resources, WMO staff met internally to talk about location ideas for like pop-up, pop-up events and for the community conversation meetings. So we have a list of those. I started sending out some emails to kind of see what events we might be able to have, like a pop-up event at with the questionnaire for people to fill out. I've been working with Matt McLees from our GIS department. He's working on the interactive mapping application. He's got it kind of in a draft form and he's asked me for some introductory content. So I've got that drafted and I'll send that hopefully to him this week to start finishing that up. Staff has also talked about, we're going to be splitting up, going to all the township board meetings and city council meetings at least once. So all staff will be going to at least one of those meetings to kind of give them like a five-minute introduction that we're, you know, we're starting this plan update. Here's a questionnaire. Here's a promotional flyer. If you could advertise this, we want to get as many residents to give input as we can. So we'll be attending those. And then I've started working on the questionnaire that we'll have for the public engagement process. So we're having a staff meeting on Wednesday and we'll go over a few things to keep that moving. And with that, that's all I've got. If anybody has any questions, I can answer anything you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa as a follow-up?
This is Commissioner Phillips. Just curious, I know the inspections at the public accesses, are those DNR employees or are they actually county employees? Or do you hire them, Melissa? Or how does that work?
Nope. So we actually, so we contract with a company called Waterfront Restorations and they do all the hiring of inspectors. They make sure they get through the DNR training. They actually give them some additional training. They do all the onboarding, all the scheduling. I just get a contract together with them. I kind of put together a schedule of when I want them to start, you know, the start time and end time at each access and on what days. So I make a schedule for them and I tell them how many hours, you know, they, we want to have them work this year. And then, but they, they take care of all, all the inspectors. They are waterfront restoration employees. And I just work with them on coordinating, you know, coordinating inspections and making sure there's coverage and stuff like that. So.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll add a little bit that we do, Melissa did write an aquatic invasive species management plan. So through all of your downtime or, you know, when you really want to read a good plan, she's put together a nice little plan that also outlines which lakes get inspections and how many hours on each lake. She does coordinate for the entire county. So while some of the other watershed districts also, you know, coordinate some of the inspections at some of the boat launches, like Prior Lake, for example. Melissa makes sure, you know, that overall the lakes in the county have coverage and she fills in gaps. And Melissa, doesn't the DNR do like sporadic here and there inspections in some places too?
Yeah, like last year, I think they, they did do inspections on O'Dowd for like one day. And I think they came to Cedar for one day. But basically the DNR puts in about 600 hours a season on Prior Lake and then they have a decon station there also. So the DNR prioritizes lakes that have zebra muzzles. So they will put staff on those lakes rather than other lakes, which, which is good, you know, to have the decon station there. That's part of the purpose of the program. We don't want to keep spreading zebra muzzles to the other lakes. We want to protect them. But so yeah, very rarely do they show up on our lakes because they're prioritizing zebra muzzle lakes to have inspectors on those.
Yep. And then the inspectors are through waterfront restoration of the contract are paid primarily through the aquatic invasive species fund that we have. That's through state grants. So we get about how much each year, Melissa?
It's about 68 to 69,000.
And then that's what covers the bulk of those costs for the inspectors as well.
And we spend 45,000 of that on watercraft inspections. So we spend 30 in the WMO and we give Parlex Spring Lake 15,000. Because they're getting six, six to 700 free hours from the DNR, really.
This is Commissioner Phillips. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Other questions? Next on the agenda then is the On Watershed One Plan. And unless Rita has joined us, I'll give you the update. So as of right now, the Lower Minnesota River East Draft Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan has just finished its 60-day review period. And for those of you that are available, there will be a public presentation of that plan scheduled for May 30th, coming up here real quick. And that'll be at the New Prague Fire Department, which is right on there on Highway 21 as you enter town from the north. If anybody can make that, there's a open house, so to speak, from 4:30 to 5:00. We can may ask questions and et cetera. And then there'll be a formal presentation at 5:30 of the comprehensive watershed plan. So anybody else need? So anybody else need any information that, any staff members want to add any comments to that?
Um, well, Commissioner, uh. Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, I would probably just add, uh, you know, as far as like the comments we submitted as staff. Uh, probably the, the bigger comment was just that there didn't seem to be in the initial draft, a lot of. Clarification on exactly what this entity might do and exactly how they were going to coordinate with other entities. Uh, because we'd already encountered an issue with uh PCA's monitoring plan. Uh, you know, we had said that we uh would submit the uh monitoring locations we wanted prioritize for the WMO and then. Unfortunately, the lower men en- ended up submitting as well, which created a much larger list. And of course, our concern is we want the PCA to prioritize what we want monitored in the WMO, not some other entity made up of entities. That's not us. Um, cause obviously we're the only ones able to implement anything that comes out of those monitoring activities. So. Um, I think we've been working with them to kind of improve those uh coordination um. Plans in the plan. And so I think that's uh really nice that, you know, they're kind of open to working with that and kind of improving that. Cause obviously we all want to work together and, and fill gaps, not, not duplicate. So um as far as, you know, staff's concerned, that was probably the biggest concern we had was just. Really ensuring that there was some clear coordination in that plan so that everybody knew who was going to do what.
Thanks, Vanessa. Uh, the other comment I'll make is that, what they have came pretty obvious to me as I got involved in this a little bit. Is that we are fortunate because we have such a strong organization, track record of performance. Uh, excellent staff and, and great volunteers in our organization to accomplish a lot. And the other members of the lower men weren't as far along in terms of their development. So we had to be careful that we don't have a lot of duplication of effort, things that we are already doing. We don't want to have to kind of redo uh it for a larger organization. So that's been a kind of a challenge for staff as well as it has been for. For Rita and I in terms of coordinating and communicating with the rest of the lower men. So thanks again for staff for the taking leadership in that. Any other questions to follow up on that? If not, we'll move on to new business. There we go. Um, I'm anxious to hear uh. The staff report on this cover crop benefits calculator, because it seemed very confusing to me when I'm looking at it. So take it over.
Vice Chair and Commissioners, well, hopefully we can clarify some things here and, and make it less uh, less confusing. Uh, so back in two thousand eighteen, so cover crops, I guess, backing up a little bit further. Cover crops is, um, it's been around forever, but uh we more recently have kind of put it into our cost share docket. And have a lot of participation. It's one of our. Um, practices that we have the most. You've noticed in the annual reports. It's typically in the top three for most amount of projects that we're putting in the ground um per year. Uh, so in two thousand eighteen, it's kind of when we started to incorporate that into our docket. But um, when we did that, there's, there was not a universally. Accepted way of calculating the benefits. Whereas in like a grass waterway or a great stabilization or other various practices. There is a very defined way of how to calculate those benefits. Um, so, you know, one of the big things with cover crops is the soil health aspect of it. But you're also putting vegetation on the ground. Um, in periods of the year where there otherwise wouldn't be. And, and so there is the sediment and phosphorus. Uh, and, and soil loss as well. The, those benefits are very much still a part of um, uh, cover crop. And if we are uh including those in any grants. Uh, all our grants have a um sediment phosphorus reduction. Uh, goal that we have to hit. And so we wouldn't want to be putting. Projects using grant dollars if we're not collecting benefits on them. Um, it's detrimental to, you know, the, the goals of, of what that grant is. And so. Um, that's kind of the, the background of it. So in two thousand eighteen, we developed. A way of calculating cover crops and, and maybe even Vice Chair Pitt might recall. I'm sure we brought it to the WPC to have it kind of looked at it at one point. Um, it was basically the, the best way that we felt at that time um to, to do that. And so, and it, it's worked. Um, uh, through the years. Um, but to date, there still isn't a method that we know about that is kind of universally used. Um, in the state. And so, um, we developed that one. And after enough years of, of going through it, um, we've come to find that it's just, it's very time consuming. And so the SWCD, specifically Diane and Troy, who I'm going to turn it over to here in a little bit. Um, wanted to kind of go back and look, is there another way that we could. Essentially calculate these benefits while reducing staff time and still end up with an accurate number. Uh, it might not necessarily be accurate in a per sub watershed basis, but as an overall. Method of calculating it. Is there some way that we can reduce that? Um, so our, our current way, and I won't get into much of the details of this because Diane got it in her presentation. Um, but you're going to see it, it's cumbersome. There's, um, you're separating out po- portions of fields. And basically running these calc's on various um sub watersheds within a given field. And that just, that takes time when you're doing that. And so. We're looking at it as more of a, you know, um, larger scale endeavor versus trying to break apart a field, you know, to get the very pinpoint. Most um. Uh, benefits for, you know, those sub, sub areas of the field. Um, maybe looking at it as more wholesome. Um, so I guess what I'll do now is I'll, you've already heard from Troy today, but I'll introduce Diane. Um, I'll stop sharing my screen and she's going to go over a presentation. Uh, it's going to kind of outline our previous methods in a little bit more detail and then also what they found by reviewing past data. And um, you know, proposing a new potential way of, of calculating benefits and kind of lay it all out for you. So. Without further ado, I will stop sharing my screen. And I'll let Diane then take over.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, that was a very nice summary. Um, I'm going to start sharing my screen here. Okay, um, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, I'd like to give a small presentation on, um, how we currently. Evaluate the benefits of cover crops, like Ryan was saying. And um, just our ideas for proposing a new method. That could save some staff time and become more efficient um for the increasing number of requests that we're getting for these projects. A little bit of background um on this topic. Um, as Ryan mentioned, anytime we use a state grant um to pay for cover crop projects, we need to requi- they require um benefit calculations. Um, for sediment and phosphorus reductions. And so in twenty eighteen. The SWCD and Ryan worked together with Bowser to come up with, well, what is um the best me- best method? We know of that um would be the most accurate to do this. And um while it is very accurate, um, it's very time-consuming, labor-intensive. Um, just because it's a very detailed um per field, per acre type of calculation. And um every year we're just getting more uh higher number of cover crop requests, bigger acreages. Um, which require more calculations and uh is just becoming a little bit impractical due to the number of requests we're getting. And the time it takes to complete them. Um, and like Ryan had mentioned too, uh, the primary objective would be to track the trends over time. Um, on a larger scale. So while we're doing a field-by-field um sub watershed level, um. The new method we're going to propose, which I'll go into detail about, um, will give similar results on a larger watershed level. Um, this is just a nice visual of all the cover crop fields in Scott County between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three. So. For six years, uh, which was about eighty-five hundred acres. And um, the, the calculations we have to do um cover every single acre of, of these uh contracts. Uh, so I'll give a little detail on the current method we use and then I'll describe how it's a little bit different from the proposed method. Um, so currently it's a very detailed and labor-intensive process where. We take each field that's planted to a cover crop and break it into similar subwatersheds. Um. They're usually, it's first divided by where the water goes, different um water discharge points. It could be. A tile intake, it could be a drainage ditch, or it could be a wetland. Um, and so that could break the field itself into, you know, three to five different subfields. Um, and then other divisions we might make would be, um, maybe if there's some really steep areas and some really. Not steep areas where a calculation would be different between the two, we might break those two into different areas. Um, but typically on one field, say it's a thirty or a fifty acre field, um, you might have three to five. Separate subfields and each one would need its own uh calculation, which is um basically just a matter of running through. A few different um slopes and spreadsheets. Um, but. To do this takes about four to six hours per project, per staff. Um, and a lot of times that equates to about three to five hundred dollars worth of staff time per project. And um if you're figuring. We might have sixteen to twenty cover crop projects a year. Um, that can be between six and eight thousand dollars. So. Um, it can be time and labor intensive and not to mention, um, the more requests we get, the more. Grants we get for cover crops is going to be harder for current staff to keep up with um finishing it, all these projects. Um, so here's a very basic example of what this might look like. Uh, this was a thirty acre field. And it was split um in three separate subwatersheds based on where the water drained to. So um on the, the red shaded area that went to a tile intake. The yellow shaded area went to a wetland and the blue shaded area went to a drainage ditch. Um, so we had to separate them out and do all the calculations for three different fields, basically. Um, and just for reference, um, just I want to give you this number so you know how similar um the methods are. Um, this, the sediment savings per acre came out to point one nine tons of sediment per acre. So that was based on a. True field level calculation. Um, what we're proposing is to simplify the process a little bit. Um, partially by using the main dominant um soil type slope group. And water discharge point rather than breaking it into multiple. Um, because as you see in the example. Um, while each of them went to a separate drainage discharge point, um, all of those discharge points were still in the Porter Creek watershed. Um, then we came up with some average default values we could use based on the past um three years of calculations. And this came out to a hundred and twelve field level calculations we've done in the past three years. Based on some of those averages, um, there's some default values we can use for soils and slopes. Um, which would make only one variable left, which would be distance to water. Um, we could come up with some default graphs that staff could use to just pick. Um, the closest reference point off of that graph and I'll show you that in a minute. Um, the main points of this is that it could make more standardized results. Um. There's less room for interpretation between different staff and over time on a bigger watershed basis. Um, the results would be very similar. Um, and then it would also reduce staff time uh by seventy-five percent or more, um, reducing it down to about seventy dollars per project. So here's just a visual example of what the new method would look like. Um, the first part would be. Um, reducing it just to the main dominant. Um, sub watershed and doing the, taking the calculations for that one, um, one main watershed per field. The second part of that example was um using the default values that we have that were averages. Um, a staff could use a chart like this that we would develop ahead of time and could pick. Um, based on the distance to water um on the x-axis. And the slope the, of their field, um, they would be able to just pick a number off of this reference graph. Um, so in this example, uh, the actual calculation I did resulted in point one nine tons per acre. Of reduction where um the proposed method resulted in point two one tons per acre. So very similar, just a lot quicker way to get there. Um, so the next steps would be if this is accepted um by the WPC, uh, we would send it to Bowser for their review. Um, and if um we can agree with them on, on this method, then we would request the same methodology for. Um, residue management and also no till strip till practices, um, which is a, a similar practice. And um, like Ryan mentioned, um, we, we have to. Report numbers to Bowser because these are state-funded pro- um, grant-funded practices. And um recently we received approval through the WBIF grant to use. The grant for residue management. And so we currently don't have an approved method to do these calculations for that practice. And um we think this method would be a good method to use for that one as well. So. Um, with that, I would take any questions. I know it's a, a little bit detailed. Um. But if there's any higher level uh questions I could ask or I could.
Vice Chair, uh, nice job Diane. Um, so yeah, if there's any questions for Diane about, you know, the specifics of this, uh, this is an action item. So we are looking to, you know, take comments from the WPC. If you've got questions or concerns or anything else that you'd want uh addressed. Um, otherwise we would be looking to, you know, take, take a motion on it.
Is Commissioner Phillips a quick question? Um, what it, you mentioned the cost on the um older way of doing it and um. Is there a, a cost on the new way of doing it? Is there a software to buy or how does that compare um? To um with, with the proposal as it stands?
Yeah, um, so the, yep, with the current method, we're, we estimate about three to five hundred dollars per project in staff time. Um, with the new method, we, we estimate about one hour or seventy dollars per project. Um, so, so quite a bit of savings. There isn't anything additional to purchase. Um, it's all just a matter of time savings. There would be some time upfront um. In developing those charts. Yes, that would take some time, but um that could be done kind of in the off-season. Whereas. Um, when we're trying to get projects paid and certified is when these calculations need to be completed and um. Technically, so we're not, we can't pay a person for their practice until it's done. Um, so it'd be nice to have all the, the legwork done in advance. Um, so at certification time, this could be quicker. But um, yep, basically the comparison of about five hundred dollars per project versus. Uh, seventy dollars per project on about sixteen to twenty projects per year is what we currently have.
Good, thanks.
And this is Commissioner Pitt. Uh, I'm very impressed. So thank you for a great presentation. It was very easy to follow along and understand. Um, I just have a couple of comments or questions maybe. It looks to me like we might be setting a trend here. Within Bowser because obviously there hasn't been a lot of other. Watersheds that have done this type of presentation or analysis before. Is that safe to assume?
Yeah, um, I can't say how other districts are doing this. Um, I've heard it's not as detailed as we do it, but um. There, I think soon, maybe Bowser will. But there, I think soon, maybe Bowser will have some better guidance and methodology. But right now, it's it's kind of been up to us to develop it. And yeah, so I think we are sending, setting a trend here.
Well, great, great job. Yeah, I hope that it gets through Bowser's approval and then eventually maybe potentially could be used by other districts also. It seems like a much smarter way to do things. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Diane or comments? If not, I'm sure.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I wanted to thank you for your question, Virgil, because that was right where I was going to go to is like, what what would they be comparing your work to versus what what currently is being done? So I I think it's great that you guys are kind of on the cutting edge of this. So I'll be interested to see what kind of feedback you get from them and and hopefully the green light to move forward.
Vice Chair, I have one more thing I wanted to just add, and that's we're going to take it to Bowser and try to get their approval on this as well. Same thing with MPCA. There could be a scenario where they say no, and we we on the local end might still do that. So if we're not using grant funds, we could still use this new method for any locally funded projects to save on the staff time. But yet for grant projects, we revert back to the old method as well. So just wanted to throw that scenario out there if if others hadn't kind of thought about that, too.
Thanks, Ryan. That that makes a lot of sense. And even if even if that is the worst-case scenario, it's not the end of the world because it still gives us just more data because that would have more data sets for one system versus the other system and how it kind of relates in our county here. So again, I would definitely be looking for a motion to approve the new cover crop benefits calculation process that we're going to implement. So.
Mr. Schmidt, I'll make that motion.
It's been moved. There's been a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve of the new cover crop benefits calculation process as defined here today. Are there any other questions or comments on this before we take a roll call? Hearing none, I would ask then to take roll call.
Thank you, Commissioner Pent. Commissioner Pent?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great, thank you. Next new business item is the LGU cost share program by Vanessa.
Vice Chair, so there was a little bit of confusion with this one. So it's actually.
Right, are you going to do it?
Well, we're going to tag-team it. I can I can start and then Vanessa, the plan is for then Vanessa to fill in gaps and to jump in at times.
I I'll admit, I accidentally deleted his initials when I was finalizing the agenda and trying to format it. So it's my mistake.
Ryan, you thought you were going to get off the hook. It's not that easy. Sorry.
Vice Chair Commissioner, so this is an action item as well. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that to start. This is what we're proposing is a pilot program. And that is for local government units, so cities and townships, to have essentially a separate pot of funds that they could apply for on stormwater BNP's. And you know, Vanessa can kind of touch a little bit on the the background, but there, she's been contacted by a couple of cities that they have a need out there for improving stormwater BNP's or also ensuring they are providing the benefits that they were designed for.
Ryan, do you want to open up the PowerPoint?
Yeah, do you want me to just jump right into the PowerPoint?
Yeah, might as well.
All right.
Benefit of everybody, just a quick review again of the BPMs in terms of stormwater best practices. We haven't done a lot with that.
Yeah, by sure. That's correct. We haven't done a lot of those in the past. We, two recent ones that might ring a bell is we worked with the city of Shakopee on installing, they're called sappel baffles. And what they are is they go inside a storm drain. And the gist of it is essentially you can collect some of the sediment that drains into those storm drains and it captures that sediment without allowing it to pass through the system and end up like this one ended up in the Minnesota River. So those sappel baffles capture that sediment, and then you can do periodic cleanings where you remove that sediment and, you know, you take it to a waste site where you can dispose of it properly. Another example would be a stormwater pond. We worked with the city of Savage where they had a stormwater pond that took runoff from a parking lot. And and then obviously, you know, it outlets it in the, there was the nearby Fredrick River, actually, that was flowing through that area. And what they wanted to do is actually retrofit it. So, you know, it was designed for standards at the time that it was initially constructed. But through, you know, further development or design standards changing, they wanted to essentially improve upon that that pond. And they actually installed, well, they expanded it so it had a larger capacity to it as well. So those are kind of two examples of that. So, you know, another one would be, you know, ponds in general just fill up with sediment. That's what they're designed to do. And, you know, cities are required to clean those every so often per the MS four requirements. And, you know, there just might not be enough funds to go around in their budgets. And so there's a little bit of a gap there where a lot of times those activities are not covered by grants. I guess the two examples of Shakopee and Savage were covered. And so this program is geared more towards, you know, things that wouldn't be covered by a grant. And so we we come in and and try to help out the LGUs as best we can. So did that kind of give enough background of the types of projects?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we're going to jump into the background here. And so I guess we've kind of been talking a little bit about that. So I don't know, Vanessa, is there any other items that we haven't already touched on a little bit that maybe you'd want to mention?
Yeah, administratively, I mean, you've hit on a lot of like some of the key points. So there's there's several things that we're trying to address here right now. And with our watershed management plan update, that's always the time that gives us that really perfect opportunity to kind of tweak our existing programs. We're offering new programs kind of based upon what we've learned over the last planning cycle. So we're seeing at the staff level is that there's just some, just kind of just clunky programming when it comes to how we partner with our local LGUs. So our LGUs are our our cities, our municipalities, our townships, right? Through Rivers Park District, those are the examples of the LGUs. And and just how how we work with them and partner with them on projects. Now, on one hand, currently, yes, if they want to cost share with us, they can always apply through the tax program. You know, however, the tax program really is designed specifically for residents. And you're not really apples-to-apples projects here. The other issue, of course, is that the the ones that the cities and townships are applying for, those types of projects really do need like an engineer's review. So we're really not, our water resources engineer here at the county really isn't maybe as getting involved in those as maybe that they should. And they really don't need a lot of other review outside of maybe the staff level. So the review process for those projects is also kind of different than the review process that the residential projects are applying for. So that's kind of one thing. The other thing is that, you know, as Troy mentioned, he kind of really put the nail on the head, which is that those grant funds are just getting harder and harder to to meet those eligibility requirements. So when our LGUs have to go through our existing grant cost share program, you know, it's, a lot of that is pretty restricted to what the grants require. And so it does make it harder and harder to have them have eligible projects through that program. At the same time, we also do targeted projects, obviously, through the WMO. You've heard about many of them over the years. The Markley Lake Flood Mitigation Study was actually a targeted project, obviously, that we did with partnership through Prior Lake and Credit River. But, you know, trying to get that grant through the contract process at the county was also kind of arduous. And if we have a streamlined process that's already pre-approved, it allows us also to really speed up that that getting those projects underway. So on one hand, we're working with cities through, partially a little bit through the cost share program, and a little bit, we're also working with them through these targeted projects. And we really just want to streamline it into one program that allows us to really efficiently work with our LGUs. And then also, you know, free up more of that technical assistance and funding specifically for the residents. Because really, that's a a very different kind of of cost share type program. So, you know, that's that's kind of the the gist of why we're trying to do it. And and again, the overall goal for us is to really fill the gaps where state grants, federal grants, other grants aren't aren't reaching. You know, they're they're getting narrower and narrower, but they still, you know, cover quite a few things. So we're really trying to hit those projects that the LGUs are like, we really need to do this. And from a WMO perspective, it hits our priorities. And just because the state doesn't think it's an eligible grant project does not mean it's not a WMO priority. We have a lot of things that we do that don't, that don't qualify for funding. Pretty much any of our monitoring never qualifies for funding. A lot of our studies or whatever, we might not get any funding for because, again, that's not eligible, too. We might do projects for very different reasons than than a state might approve grants for, but that doesn't mean it doesn't hit our priorities. So there are a lot of things in our plan and in our programs that we prioritize that just aren't grant-eligible. But we still want to get them done. And so when the cities come to us and say, we want to get these done, and we agree because they're high on our priority list, we're looking for a better way to get that done as quickly as possible and effectively as possible. So that's kind of the gist of the background.
Thank you, Vanessa. So just reiterating here, one of the bullet items on this background slide is that we'd like the WPC to weigh in on this pilot program with any suggestions or improvements that they see with it. So what we'll do is we'll just start getting into the details of kind of what we've, the direction that we've kind of outlined here. So it would be eligible for local cities and townships to apply. The maximum cost share would be fifty percent. The standards that they'd have to meet would be the MS four requirements and also our WMO standards. And then also, we we'd be looking to basically develop a new application that would be created and submitted by a predetermined date. And one of the other background, on that background slide thing that we didn't touch on is that we'll be working with, the plan, I guess, is to work with a couple reps at the cities and figure out, you know, with their projects, what is the best time of the year for them to actually do these applications? You know, I'm guessing it's probably the beginning or the end of the year would be my guess, but you never know, there could be another time period that I'm unaware of that these urban BNP's are, you know, kind of being developed to plan for. But we'll figure that out, and we'd have like a ranking and batching process, similar to what we'll do with our our tax projects right now. And so that's the next item. So, you know, highest priority would be based on water quality benefits and also our watershed management plan priorities, activities identified in the annual work plan, the watershed management plan, or the estimated well-approved municipal plan. These would be ones that are not eligible for other funding, like we mentioned before. The LGUs would be responsible for calculating the current benefits of a stormwater BNP and then also then providing what they're proposing to do. So if they're, you know, improving upon an existing structure, they would, you know, be calculating if this pond currently, you know, because it's filled in with sediment to a certain degree, is, you know, is reducing sediment phosphorus X amount, and they're proposing to clean it out or make it bigger, they'd have to then do the calculations on that improvement, that new benefit that it'd be providing. Now, this does not mean that all applications would be approved for funding either. So that's what the ranking and batching is essentially designed to do, that we review it, and if we feel like it's a good project, then we would look at funding it. And if we don't, then, you know, we have the ability to deny it as well. And in, you know, the plan here would be looking at these projects, correct me if I'm wrong, Vanessa, but they'd be going to the WPC for a recommendation on them as well.
Absolutely.
Budget, so the number that we've kind of thrown out there to start would be fifty thousand per year. And it would not impact our current cost share program budget. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like removing fifty thousand from our land and water treatment budget. This would just be an additional fifty thousand that's set aside for this. We did have some preliminary conversations. If, let's say, no cities apply, then it's a possibility that it could be moved over to the normal tax project. Or, you know, like last year, we had a little bit of of extra in the tax budget, and then potentially it could get shifted over to this if there was more interest in 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 cities. So you will play that by year, and, you know, that would be something that would lean more towards the end of the year when we know those things. You know, the beginning of the year is really tough to to budget for that. So that would be more of a how's the year going type of deal at the end. So hopefully, that's when these cities would want to apply. That's what I'm thinking the best timeframe might be. So with that, just looking for suggestions, you know, if or questions, be happy to answer any of those as well. So with that, I'll stand for any question or suggestion.
I would, one other thing I would add, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, is that, you know, we will, if we have the approval from the WPC to go ahead, we would flush the program out a little bit more thoroughly and then bring it back to the WPC for, you know, approval of the the program details. And then again, as it is a pilot program, we would run it, you know, for just a couple of years just to kind of see how how it takes on and how well it works with the goal that if it worked well, we would incorporate it into the new watershed management plan. And if it does not, we'd obviously take anything we learned from it and incorporate it to the whatever we have or just, you know, move on from there.
Commissioner Pent, thank, thanks so much, Vanessa and Ryan. Yeah, you did a good job presenting presenting it to us. Obviously, this is something a little bit new for us. We have not done a lot, like I said, with MS four kinds of projects with LGUs. But as it affects the water in our district, right? It behooves us, I think, to to take a look at this. And so the other advantage might be is that in terms of expanding sort of our constituency base out there, we deal a lot with landowners, obviously. But we also then could bring some real value now to some of our LGUs in still accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish. So the concept makes a lot of sense to me. Interesting to hear from other commissioners here what their thoughts are, either a question or pros or cons or anything else you might want to comment on.
This is Commissioner Phillips. A quick question I had. If it's not, if the money is not coming out of the cost share to to fund it, where would the money be coming from to fund it? Would that be our 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 general fund, so to speak? Or how would that be funded? And also, how would it, would you anticipate the funds being used quicker if we did did this partnership? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. That is a great question. For this first year, for twenty twenty-four, it would come, at the moment, I would propose it would come out of the funds we would be saving from our watershed-based implementation funding projects that grant work plan we just finished submitting. And so if we actually do get those approved work plan projects, then we actually don't have to spend our local general funds that we had already dedicated, which means we could reallocate them towards this project. It was in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. So fifty thousand of that two hundred thousand dollars is a very small amount. And that would be my first choice. Obviously, we could also take it out of the existing fund balance, but I, at the moment, would say that's unnecessary since we would probably be saving funds through the watershed-based implementation funding work plan projects. And then.
Um, and then. I apologize. Was there a second question?
Yeah. Would be fun. The, the funds would be used quicker, I think.
Yeah, uh, so the, the goal, yes, is, is to get the funds out the door faster. Um. As I said, right now, we, we already do part, I mean, it's not gonna stop us from partnering with the LGUs because we already do. It's just, we do it in such kind of, almost kind of clunky, convoluted ways that it's, it's just really administratively time consuming, which obviously is. Cost uh, that the residents pay, right? They're not, they're paying for the administrative time as well. And if we can speed this up. And get these projects out the door much faster because we're. It's uh, streamlining the contracting process and just kind of having one quick program to do this through. Uh, that's a time savings to everybody and they'll get the, the projects out the door faster. Uh, the biggest trick too with grants is that. You know, like the watershed based implementation funding grant, that's a biennial grant. It's gotta be in our watershed management plan. Well, if it's not in our watershed management plan. They're not even eligible to put these projects forward. So then they have to wait until we either update our plan or the next round of watershed based implementation funding. So I mean, our municipalities and they're just sitting on these projects, waiting for things, waiting for money to come about. And it's like. We could make it happen a lot faster.
Good question. Thanks for the follow up on that, Vanessa. Uh, I just make another comment. Um, so there's a balance there. Obviously, we wanna be able to do things more quickly. Um, but I'm always concerned about, are we the path of least resistance? So therefore they wanna use our money rather than other funds that are available. And as you know, I'm in the stickler about that in the past, but. But I appreciate the fact that you did mention here in the pilot that to be eligible, uh, priority be given to projects that. Aren't available to be funded through other sources. So thank you for that, uh, that clarification. Any other questions? If not, I'd be uh, looking for a motion to approve a pilot program for the uh. It's got watershed management organization to work with the LGUs uh, for cost sharing on MS four projects on a pilot basis. And with the amount of funding dedicated at fifty thousand. Annually, I'm sorry. Yes, annually. Is there a second? Is there a motion to that effect?
I would be, this is Commissioner Casilius. I would be happy to make that motion if I could actually repeat everything you said.
I think that probably grasp that and, and clean it up, hopefully, and not.
But yeah, no, I, I think it sounds worth, worth pursuing. And so I would definitely uh, offer up a motion that we, we get, you know. Give them the green light.
Yes, mm-hmm. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
This is Commissioner Phillips. I'll second the motion.
Great. We moved and seconded that we recommend the approval for a pilot program and working with the local LGUs for cost sharing on MS four type of projects. Uh, to two hundred fifty thousand per year. And uh, is there any other further questions or comments on this before we do? Hearing none, can we take a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
I.
Commissioner Phillips?
I.
And Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Alright, thank you. That was very uh, informative. So I appreciate it. And we're looking forward to uh, going ahead with this pri- uh, private project and starting to see some results. So. Looking forward to it. The last, not the last, but the next item on the new business is the uh, tax application by the Glazinski filter strip farm. Ryan?
Commissioners, yes, we're getting down there. We're getting close to the end. Uh, so this is a filter strip application. Uh, if you noticed in Troy's report, uh, there was a recommendation. Uh, on it in that table at the end of uh, of the SWCD report. So this property is located in Helena Township, section sixteen. Uh, Ken is uh, interested in re-enrolling two point one acres of filter strips. Uh, so our re-enrollment rate is a hundred dollars per acre, which is half of the rate for a new project. So the total amount being requested is twenty one hundred. Um, this would be for a new one-time ten-year contract. So you can't uh, renew it after you get approved for one renewal on it. Uh, this filter strip is planted along a ditch that then flows into Raven Stream. Will help continue to buffer sediment nutrients. And if you notice in the fact sheet, um. It's got really good benefits. The, if, if you look at the unit costs, we're talking about three dollars of, for sediment and uh, for ton and. And phosphorus is a dollar sixty seven. So, um, this one was a fairly easy one to determine that it made sense to. To uh, to potentially then re-enroll it. Uh, so this one did go to the SWCD. Uh, May sixteenth board meeting and they recommended approval. And why it's in front of you today is that uh, we currently have it in our uh, docket that all re-. Rolls go to the WPC. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
For Ryan on this. Just question of it. Alright, I have one question for you, Ryan. Um, I mean, it's pretty clear that this is a project we want to move forward. That's a given, right? The, the benefit is great there. Uh, are we concerned about any precedent setting here in terms of? When we will allow for re-enrollment uh, funding on these type of projects because as we talked in the past. If we can't, we can't fund every renewal, although we will never may have any money left to do any new projects. So concerns there.
Uh, Vice Chair, um, I th- I think there's, there's always probably a concern about that, but we do have a ranking and batching. Process and in there and also in the docket, we clearly outlined what we're looking to fund. So. Uh, the WMO plan's pretty clear about, you know, not necessarily wanting to. Uh, you want to incentivize change but not sustain it. And so what that essentially means is we're, we're trying to. Uh, incentivize people to uh, put these, you know, filter ships or native grass plantings in. And leave them beyond the term of, you know, when the contract, contracts, contracts expire. And we do limit the budget. So there's only twenty thousand that we set aside out of the, you know, the two hundred thousand that we have for it. Um, so uh, there's enough, I think, that um, you know, uh. Let, layers to this that, I mean, we're really only funding a very small subset of. Of uh, what's actually expiring. And our process is. Proactively going to the ones that we would want to uh, fund. You know, so it's not necessarily the ones coming in the door. We, we kind of go out and look to see. Uh, because they, they have a window too, also of one year of, of when it's gonna expire that they. They have to apply. So if they let it go two years after the contract, then that, that's it. I mean, that they don't have the opportunity to. Uh, to re-enroll at that time. So I think we've put enough layers in this that we're really funding only the, the. The highest benefiting projects. And this is a prime example of that.
Right, thanks. Thanks for, yeah, and I had forgotten that, that we put a limit on this to twenty thousand. So it's my mistake in the docket. So yes. That makes a lot of sense. That's our control right there is that we only can do twenty thousand. It's not like we're gonna get overrun by renewals. So thanks for clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or quick comments for Ryan?
Uh, Ryan, this is Commissioner Casilius. Now, is this, this requires new work or this is, this is. Like readdressing work that was already done. I'm, I'm really not clear on how this works.
Yeah, uh, Vice Chair Commissioner Casilius, uh, great question. So typically, no. Uh, however, if uh, there was, so what ends up happening is there's a ninth year uh, status review. So generally speaking, we have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna still look like the next year, you know, when it's expiring. And so if there were concerns in that ninth year status review that things aren't looking good. And they have not addressed them, I mean, that, that potentially would become a problem. Um, and then also when they re-enroll, they're going to go through the same status review checks that. We currently have for any new project. So they still get inspected. Uh, they still have to make sure that they uh, are maintaining the practice and that it's functioning as it's designed. Um, so likely, no, they don't have to do anything. But if they do, they would have to correct it to remain in the program.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
Thanks, Ryan. Other questions for Ryan? If there are no other questions, I would again entertain a motion to approve the tax application by the Glazinski farm for a filter strip. Renewal.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll make that motion.
Been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second that motion.
Been moved and it's seconded that we approve the tax application by the Glazinski farm for a filter strip renewal. Is there any other further discretion? Hearing none, then I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Absolutely. Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
I.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, are there any other? Issues, questions, et cetera? If not, the next item would be to have a motion to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Phillips. I will move to adjourn.
Alright, great. I don't think we need a second for that if I'm correct. Um, we need a roll call vote though.
Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
I.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank, thanks, members.
Have a wonderful evening, a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. Um, and.